Welcome, everybody, to the November 8th, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, or any electronic communication devices. And agendas are located at the back of the room if you would like to follow along. We're going to call the meeting to order, and I'm going to ask Ms. Haddock to do the moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance, and then she'll have a short statement after that, then we'll get into review of the agenda. So at this time, I'd recognize Ms. Haddock for a moment of silence.
Thank you. This is for prayer and a blessing to all the men and women in uniform and their families, past, present, and future. Thank you for your service to our country, and God bless.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Deb. We do have one commissioner who is on teleconference, so what that creates for the meeting is that we'll have to do a roll call vote on every issue. So first item on the agenda is item four, review and approval of the agenda.
Removed.
Second.
Moved by Haddock, seconded by DeSanto. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Oh, sorry, roll call vote.
Buschardt.
Aye.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Farabee.
Aye.
Haddock.
Aye.
Lacroix.
Aye.
Next on our agenda is veterans' recognition. And I'll recognize Sergeant, or sorry, Mr. Jerry W. Der.
Maybe his...
This is going to be a presentation.
Wyatt. This is his son Wyatt Der.
Yeah, here's the Marine. So, anyway, yeah, Jerry Der was Sergeant Der Foundation, my son Wyatt, and was just asked to speak a little bit about veteran issues, and I'm going to be quick. We have a nonprofit foundation we formed in 2012 in the name of my son. Colton Levi Der was a sergeant in the US Army, had multiple combat missions and tours in Iraq and Afghanistan, and six weeks within his final deployment, coming home, he took his life after battling PTSD. So veteran suicide is a big cause, the foundation awareness of veteran issues. And one of the big things we do each year, we just, last month, had our Gallantly Forward Gala at the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center. We had about 300 in attendance, to include Commissioner Haddock, who was very supportive of the event. We had a lot of veterans in the room, and we had two veteran speakers that deployed with my son in Iraq. And the first speaker was First Sergeant, active duty Andrew McVay. And Andrew told a story that is a story that needs to be heard at the local level. And Andrew told the story, he was active duty in the military, got out of the military, was out for three months, got a civilian job, was married, had a home, starting a family. And at the height of the surge in Iraq, he got called back to active duty. He was called, he thought it was a joke at first, and said, "You've got 24 hours to get back and report to base." And he said, "But I'm out, I'm starting my civilian life." And they said, "Nope, you're getting called back." So he goes back. He had 21 hours now to report to active duty. They deploy him immediately to Iraq, and he spent almost 10 months in Iraq before he was ever paid. So he's at the height of the war in Iraq, battling for us. And technicality in the pay system with the military, he's fighting a war with his buddies, but he wasn't paid. So what happened while he was deployed active duty? His wife divorced him, his house was repossessed, his vehicle was repossessed, he lost his credit score. He came back and his family was destroyed, and he was in a financial position trying to work his way out. That's a story that's all too common of a lot of our soldiers that deploy and come home, and they come home and get out of the military, and they find that this transition is not an easy one. They come home and find that they've left the family they deployed with to find a family they thought they had at home that is no longer there. The second soldier was John Thomas, a sergeant deployed with my son and Andrew McVay. He's a Purple Heart recipient. He received shrapnel in an attack in Iraq and went up one side and caused some brain injury. He was a calculus major, great at math. In his recovery, he couldn't do simple addition, he couldn't do simple math. He went back to, in his recovery period, he went back to a fob they put him to to get part of his treatment and recovery, sitting in the DFAC, the lunch area. He gets done with lunch, and he doesn't know where he's at or why he's there, and somebody has to help him get back to his room. And then he lost his marriage, his wife, his family, and financially struggled, got out of the military, but he turned it around. And actually, he is signing up to go active duty, he's going to go back and sign up. So when these soldiers come home, and we're very fortunate in the western area to have all the facilities that we have with the VA resources we have, both here in Rapid City, Sturgis with Ford Meat, and Hot Springs. Hot Springs has a treatment program for PTSD that we have many, many veterans from around the country come to. And so even this weekend, we got, reached out for assistance. We're averaging about four to five veteran families, sometimes a day, seven, eight a week, that reach out for assistance to the foundation. Here's another typical story. Veteran local in our community tried to deal with his PTSD by not getting treatment. Didn't work, he lost his job. So he's now in treatment on Hot Springs. When he's in treatment in Hot Springs, when the veterans go down there, the unfortunate thing is that the VA does not process their disability claims while they're in treatment. They can be in treatment for up to four months, they would be eligible for 100% disability while they're in there. But they come into the program, many of the veterans will come in homeless, some will come back to the mission here in Rapid City, go to HUD-VAS housing, they show up to the treatment facility, they've hit rock bottom, they've lost everything. They go to treatment, the VA doesn't process that paperwork, they tell them, "Go back to your home of record." So go back to your home of record. Well, what if I have nowhere to go? So a lot of them will come to your VSOs here in Pennington County. They will come to other organizations and ask for assistance. And then you get out of treatment, you have no job, you're trying to rebuild, and that's why the VA can't handle this situation. And really, that's why, really what I would like to say to you as commissioners is thank you for the support that you give to your veteran program, to the Veterans Corps program that you have. It's making a big difference in the community. And so these veterans come out, like I said, the VA can't handle everything that comes their way. So that is a community effort, that is at the local level, that's our foundation, that's you as leaders within the community, supporting the cause and supporting the veterans that have done so much for us. So anyway, really, I would just like to say thank you, in particular to you, I really appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jerry. Did you have anything you'd like to say?
No, I don't actually, I was just told I wouldn't have to speak, but we appreciate everything you guys do for us, and thank you for that. Thank you to you again for...
I have a question, if I can.
Yes.
Can you tell people, Wyatt, what is the website for people listening for the foundation? And then I have, if I could have a follow-up after that.
The foundation website for us is SergeantDerFoundation.org. So all the information on our foundation is there, any upcoming events, stuff like that.
So you and your family put a lot of time into this foundation. I have supported you for a few years and will continue to support, of course, but can you tell me the kind of things that you guys do for the veterans that they need help with? Because I hear a lot of things that other people, like in other areas, like the VA and different things, that they're not getting that kind of support, so you guys kind of pick up that slack. What kind of things do you guys do with your foundation?
All right. So I've already talked about the VA, so we're on the 2-1-1 helpline, and so we're a state resource for the 2-1-1 helpline, we've been on that for a couple of years now. We, the VA utilizes us, actually not just locally, but nationwide. And so, you know, we have a little bit of a diverse background, my background's in law enforcement, I was in Iraq for three years plus, working with the military. And so I had an understanding of some of these issues, obviously. I have another son that's a lieutenant in the South Dakota National Guard. So we tapped into the resources that we have available to us, the VA reaches out to us. So one of the stopgaps in the VA, when someone comes in for treatment, down to the VA system in Hot Springs, they might complete a six-week treatment program, a four-month treatment program. The VA reps will call us and say, "Okay, John needs a bus ticket back to his home of record, or he needs a plane flight." We don't have the money to do that, based on our handicaps, or maybe it's not service-connected for the treatment they're in. So a lot of the veterans that are in treatment at our local facilities, the VA reaches out to us, and we provide them transportation aid to another treatment facility, to a home of record, to another program that might assist them. We provide some of those veterans in that PTSD program with clothing, cellphone, so they can connect and reach out to their families. We do financial counseling, financial assistance, a lot of the veterans that have lost their jobs, like the one I just spoke about, that reached out this weekend. He has a wife and five children at home that have a mortgage payment, they have childcare, they have monthly bills, they have food. He is currently not receiving any VA benefits, and so they're down to little to no income. And so we can fill in those stopgaps on those emergency situations and take care of those needs. A lot of the veterans that come back, now like I talked about, First Sergeant Andrew McVay, have financial issues. They get back, and I'm sure you've been briefed on your Veterans Corps, and the type of issues that these veterans deal with. So some of them have financial issues, they have legal issues criminally. A lot of them can be minor things, back on child support. We've helped them get their driver's license reinstated through Department of Revenue, gotten orders adjudicated so they could get a driver's license to seek employment. So we do legal, we do counseling, we have some friends of mine in the legal field that will do pro bono work, some that will, we have a counselor that we utilize that specializes in PTSD. Some of the people through the VA don't find the treatment that they need privately, they struggle, and so we pay for their counseling efforts and push those through. So if you're really asking, you know, kind of what we do, it's, if you reach out, we'll figure it out.
Thank you, Jerry. The bottom line is, I don't think people knew how much you really do for the community, for the veterans. Sometimes we set up foundations and things, and then we just go, "Okay, the guy needs some money," but you guys are hands-on, that's the bottom line. You're hands-on to your guys and your women that need help, no matter what, and that's why I give to your foundation and will continue, because, again, I'm always into the people that have the hands-on instead of the hands-out.
Right.
So we're here to help.
And I appreciate that. And one more thing, I would just say, we just, you know, a couple of years ago, we got a small office downtown Rapid City, and we just moved into the same building, a relocation that will give us the opportunity to do some peer-to-peer work with the vets. So now we're, we're just moved in there a couple of weeks before the gala, getting it set up, and then we're going to do peer-to-peer counseling and group sessions with vets and with, you know, wives and their families, and get them in there and sit down as veterans, and so they can hear a story. And really, the story is, and I would say it to you, but the best thing that any of us can do, and I know Veterans Day is coming up, you know, but saying, "Thank you for your service," is, to me, anyway, it's not a lot different than walking down the sidewalk and acknowledging somebody you meet. It's actually making that effort and sitting down and talking about, really, I'm here to listen, and listen without judgment, and that would be one of the biggest things that I could say, that as a community we can do, is just be there and not be so judgmental. And that's just across the board.
Well, thank you, Jerry, Mr. Der, Jerry, and Wyatt, for all you do, and thank you for your service, and thank you for the service of the men and women that have served our country in every way, and that we can do the next step for them, the sacrifices they make for us, and we're forever grateful for what they do.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. DeSanto would like to make a comment.
Jerry, tell us about some of the fundraisers that you do. I know of one that participate in is your golf tournament.
Right.
And that one has moved from Fountain Springs out to the base, is that correct?
Correct. It's done with the Kiwanis, or not, yeah, Knights of Columbus, and so, yeah, the local Knights of Columbus, of which I believe you're part of that organization. We have, they've done, I believe, this year, is it next year, is going to be the sixth? I think it's going to be the sixth next year. And so, anyway, it'll be Knights of Columbus assists us doing a golf tournament annually, it's typically in July, and it's going to be up at, last year, they moved it out to Ellsworth, to that golf course, and then it will be there again this year in July, I can't remember exactly the date. During the Central States Fair, we do a 5K, 10K run on the last Saturday of the fair, I think that's the date. And, you know, we just do different things throughout the year, but really, you know, for us, it's, and no one, you know, no one in our organization gets paid, we have a pretty good support group of volunteers, but what I would say is, it's not about, you know, the financial aspect of raising dollars, it's truly about raising awareness so that the families in the community understand that when their son or daughter, husband, wife, brother, sister come home, that don't expect them to be normal exactly when they come home. And the hardest thing is, you know, just like when my son came home, everybody was so happy that he made it back through two tours, he was going to get out of active duty service, and he had a tough mission in Afghanistan. But coming back, everybody was immediately just happy he was home, and so we elevate our warriors to a status here and put them at a hero status automatically because they're in uniform and they've served. And so we put them up on a pedestal, but many times when they come home, they're not on that pedestal, they're down here. And it's hard to make that connection between these two steps because they don't want to disappoint. And so I don't want to disappoint, I'm not going to tell you what's on my mind, because, too, when they come home, they think about the families that they've left and what they've gone through when their husband or wife is deployed, so, anyway. But we have gotten a lot of great community support through the Knights of Columbus and their partnerships that we've come together now with, we're starting to work with Front Porch Coalition and doing some things with them, and so it's truly, we're fortunate that we have a great community.
I do.
Yeah, follow-up, Mark?
Well, I just thank you also for your service. I'm sorry for the loss of your son, and I think that you guys do a great job, you got a great organization, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the things I do want to mention, since we're on that subject, is, you know, the Veterans Parade is Sunday at 11 o'clock downtown in Main Street Square, we doing something down there between 10 and 11 also. And also, the county administration will be closed in observance of Veterans Day on Monday. So thank you for you guys' input, and I really appreciate what you're doing, because filling those gaps and making the awareness is the, the awareness is the first step, filling those gaps is what's making the difference, and finding those and helping those people out is going to be a great transition for those folks, so I thank you. And the board does. And thanks, Ms. Haddock, for your participation.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Next, we have the consent agenda. I'll recognize Office Manager, Ms. Holly Hennies.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 16th, 2018. Number seven is to acknowledge the revised notice of intent to conduct a raffle by the Team Ellsworth Spouses Club, which is simply an expansion of their selling timeframe. Number eight is to acknowledge the revised notice of intent to conduct a raffle for the Team Comm Booster Club from Ellsworth Air Force Base. Number nine is to schedule a public hearing at 9:15 a.m. on November 20th, 2018, for budget supplement SP-18-011 for 24/7 fund budget. And finally, number 10 is approval of the 2019 Idleice Mountains Snow Removal Agreement as submitted by the Highway Department.
Thank you, Holly. Is there any member from the public that would like one of those items pulled? Are any of them? Seeing none, is there any commissioners that would like any of the consent agenda removed? Seeing none, entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved by DeSanto, seconded by Haddock. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Buschardt.
Aye.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Farabee.
Aye.
Haddock.
Aye.
Lacroix.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously for the consent agenda. Items from the auditor. Recognize Ms. Cindy Muller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Muller with the Auditor's Office. You have before you the official canvas from the general election that was held on November 6th. We'd ask approval of the certificate of the Board of Canvassers of the General Election held on Tuesday, November 6th, as provided.
Motion to approve. To approve the certificate of Board of Canvassing of the General Election held on Tuesday, November 6th, as provided.
Motion's been made. And seconded by Buschardt. Any discussion on the canvassing? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Buschardt.
Aye.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Farabee.
Aye.
Haddock.
Aye.
Lacroix.
Aye.
The next item that we have is to authorize payment for all election expenses as listed. We have election day staff at $41,327.48, travel of $56, and rent of $705.
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded by DeSanto. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Haddock.
Ms. Cindy, how did the election go this year in areas when people voted and stuff? Do we have many complaints or anything, and things we needed to approve?
The biggest complaint that we did have was the signs that people were placing outside the 100-feet campaign sign limit. That was the biggest complaint we had.
Okay, but everything on the canvass, or not canvassing, but voting and...
Counting, well, yes.
And a lot of people this year, how many did, do you remember how many we had that early voted this year?
16,500.
Is that the most we've ever had, or is that about average?
No, it's not the most that we've ever had, but it is for a midterm, that's pretty good.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cindy, for your staff and all you guys have done on this election series, because it's a lot of work. So we appreciate everything your staff and you have done, and everybody that's helped us get this job done that we need to get done for elections, so...
I will pass that along to staff, they did a fabulous job.
A lot of work. Thank you, Ms. Cindy.
We have a motion for approval. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Buschardt.
Aye.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Farabee.
Aye.
Haddock.
Aye.
Lacroix.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Cindy. That was item A and B, folks. Items from Treasure, number 12.
Good morning, Janet Saylor, Treasure. Before you, you have a list of the uncollectible mobile homes that were issued on January 9th, 2018, for 714 mobile homes that were sent to the Pennington County Sheriff's Office to be collected. Out of those mobile homes that were sent, there are three mobile homes that were deemed uncollectible for a total of $782.36. So I need a motion from the board to accept the list of uncollectible mobile homes that the sheriff could not collect for the reasons listed below.
There are motion. Any discussion?
Let me, my motion.
Moved by Haddock.
Second.
Seconded by Buschardt to approve. Any discussion?
Just one thing.
Yep.
I forgot to call Net back, so apologized, I don't know if it was on this show. I didn't get off work till later, and then I went to sleep early, so if you'd apologize to her, I usually call people back, sorry. Thank you.
I'm going to say, Janet, that I was reading through your stuff, and you're expressing your appreciation of how hard the sheriff does in collecting those taxes, I'm trying to find it right here, didn't you say...
There are very few mobile homes that the sheriff ever deems uncollectible.
Exactly.
They go to a lot of work, do a lot of research, trying to levy on bank accounts or whatever they can levy on that the people have before it ever gets to this point. And there have been a few years where they've collected everything. One mobile home that is on here, we have been dealing with for, since 2015, it was left along the highway, and it's been sitting out at the highway shop, and I know Mark wants to get rid of it. So we're going through the process of doing that so that we can destroy it and get it out of there.
Good deal. I'll just mention that, from what I'm reading, that you had 714 that were in distress.
Right.
And they collected all but seven?
All but three, $782.36.
Then three, yeah, so, I mean, that's pretty outstanding work that you guys are doing and working together and getting this accomplished.
Yes, they do an awesome job helping us on this.
Okay, thank you, guys. We have a motion on the floor for approvals. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye by roll call?
Buschardt.
Aye.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Farabee.
Aye.
Haddock.
Aye.
Lacroix.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Janet. Item number 13, Buildings and Grounds, Benton County Jail Expansion and Remodel Project Authorization for Bids. Recognize Mike Cool.
Good morning, Mike Cool, Director of Buildings and Grounds. Revised bid documents for the Pennington County Jail Expansion remodel will be completed soon, so I'm seeking board authorization to advertise for bids and schedule a bid opening at December 11th at 2:00 for the bid opening. Now I have, I'd like to kind of just run through some of the adjustments we made in the project, and I do have a, some graphics that will help illustrate those. Some of the modifications that we made is we eliminated the administrative office remodel in the main jail first-floor area. We have eliminated the remodel of the existing kitchen that will, that's currently being used, will be with the new project infill work that will go in, go on underneath the jail annex, that space will be vacated. And then we've limited, we, basically, and this work we've done is eliminated a lot of, the majority of the work that would have taken place within the jail perimeter, security perimeter, which was, we learned through discussions with contractors and stuff, was something that would pose a real concern to a lot of subcontractors and had been a cause of costs going up on the project. So we've pretty much eliminated most of the work that happens within that perimeter for the project. The infill work underneath the jail annex is part of the base bid for the project, and that includes an addition of a loading dock to that area. We are, we have also made the law, the secured covered law enforcement parking area a part of the base bid. And we have kept an addition to the administrative offices in the project that will be constructed over the law enforcement vehicle Sallyport in the project, but that one will be an alternate, so it could be cut if necessary, if costs come back too high. So we've allowed some flexibility there yet as well, depending what the final contract cost is. So I am asking for authorization to go to bid, advertise for bids, and schedule a bid date opening on December 11th at 2:00.
So Mike with the... So, Mike with the Building Committee went through all this and I understand, maybe we can explain a little bit about that, the security that you were talking about. I think when some of the contractors have to come into the jail, I mean, you've got to inventory, somebody's got to be there to inventory every tool, every process that goes through that and that creates...
It is a very, for, on both sides, it's a very intensive laborious process because everything has to be tracked, anytime you track, cross that security barrier, things have to be tracked through there, so you can imagine all the materials that you're going through there are checked, all the tools are going through are checked, and then they have to be inventoried on the way out. It becomes quite a process. We, the project before had, we were trying to, we were isolating the areas to bring people in, but just their knowledge that it was still within the jail was a cause enough for them to drive costs up on the project or make them hesitant to bid on it, which in the end drove the costs up.
And you also did some simplifying of the bid too, didn't you?
Yes, I mean, overall, this project is simpler. We were trying to address, we're trying to address a number of issues across multiple areas on the, on the project. This has stripped it down to basically three places on here and simplifies it a great deal, so it isn't difficult to understand as well.
Thanks, Mike, because I have discussion from Mr. DeSanto.
Mike, it was, well, obviously brought to all of our attention that that kitchen and laundry area needed to be remodeled pretty significantly. There was a significant need there. And I'm, I'd like to kind of understand how you made the decision. Was it just based on cost or what led to the decision to not remodel the kitchen and laundry area but provide the covered parking for the law enforcement vehicles? What gave them the importance there? Where was the weight?
Those are based on discussions with the users primarily in terms of what their priorities would be for relative to the project and that's what drove those decisions for the most part. But as I've explained a little bit, cutting those things, cutting the, like, the remodel of that kitchen area out of the project had a substantial, we expect that that can have a much greater impact on the project overall by reducing the amount of time people have to go into the jail perimeter. That can have a more significant impact on the cost of the project.
Sure. That is eventually going to have to be done, however. I mean, from what I understand, we already can't keep up with that.
That is correct. Right. Those areas are needed and stuff, but we've tried to craft a project that fits it within the funds that are available.
Thank you.
Ms. Haddock.
So, maybe that's more for Brian. So, what is the kitchen and laundry area again serve? Maybe I wasn't listening well on it, or, and I apologize, I did miss the Building Committee meeting.
Good morning, Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff's Office. As far as...
So, the existing one would, kitchen and laundry serves who? And then the remodel, tell me why we need, basically, the laundry and staff area infill for the kitchen and laundry?
So, the, we currently serve all of the meals in all of our facilities out of the kitchen.
Okay.
In the jail, we're serving over two thousand meals a day out of there right now. And that was initially designed for less than three hundred-bed facility and we're currently running six hundred and sixty-two adult beds and then probably another hundred and fifty beds in our other facilities.
Okay.
The kitchen and laundry is getting built in this project. We're just vacating the existing kitchen laundry area. Right now, we're running laundry services in all three of our facilities, actually, all four of our facilities. When this is complete, we'll move, we'll centralize all of our laundry down into the jail and be able to utilize inmate labor for laundry and create some money savings there for the county and efficiencies by putting that all under one roof.
So, is there any future projects or anything that will be using our kitchen and laundry for our expansion, for this expansion? I mean, are we expanding for any other projects moving forward or is this just for our existing right now?
Right now, it's just for existing.
The kitchen is sized, the kitchen and laundry are sized for the, we've tried to plan ahead for eventual expectation that someday we will need a third jail tower. And we've tried to size it so that it can accommodate that jail tower plus address the laundry and kitchen needs of the facilities that Brian has mentioned.
Okay, I was just wondering if we were adding any more facilities into our existing that already aren't in the county and that we're adding? Basically, are we using this facility, are we existing, to add more to, are we helping the One Heart with feeding and laundry in the future? Because they're gonna need, we're right across the street, we're a facility, I mean, are we adding any other facilities besides the ones we have existing? Is that...
We have, we're not adding capacity above and beyond the scope of the potential third tower to do that. If somebody were to come out and something made sense to have a conversation about doing something like that, we'd be open to having that conversation, but we don't have any specific plans for that at this time.
So, there hasn't been conversations on adding that to it because of what potentially might be added to across the street?
I haven't had any specific conversations and whether the sheriff's had some or not, I'm not fully aware of where that's been.
Okay, and maybe on the next agenda, I'll probably put an update just to make sure of what we're doing in the care campus and then what facilities we need or what we're using for the next step for the One Heart. Just because I did send them a text to be up straight about how our facilities, what, how are we coinciding with them? Because I keep hearing we're coinciding with them on moving forward on the project, which isn't a problem, but I haven't heard what we're coinciding with. Basically, what's the next step? What is their role? What is our role? And then if our facilities are being updated or moved forward in a bigger capacity to move their facility and use some of our facilities to move theirs forward. So, bottom line is, I haven't heard much on their plans, so... But I am in support of what we're doing here because we do need it, so...
Thank you.
So, Brian, this has been, how long is this, the plans, and Mike, for the expansion?
We've probably, we've been working through, we started with some study work. We had a, did a preliminary study, we were looking at trying to place it just out in the parking lot. And then we changed direction and started looking at putting it underneath this, underneath the annex. That looked like an opportunity to save cost and allow us more flexibility for future development of the, of the parking lot for a third tower in the future. But overall, it's, we're probably more than two years into this.
No, I mean, the discussions with the Building Committee, when all this was started, I think that we all knew the laundry and the kitchen was gonna have to be updated at one time. I don't think it was pushed for any outside sources or anything along those lines. I think it was in the works way before that.
It was included in our, a facilities master plan that was approved by the Commission in 2010.
Okay, that's, that's, that's right. Just trying to clarify.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
I'd make a motion to authorize advertising for bids on the Pennington County Jail Expansion and Remodel Project with a bid opening scheduled for December 11th at 2:00 P.M.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded by, made by DeSanto, seconded by Buschardt. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, give aye by roll call.
Buschardt.
Aye.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Farby.
Aye.
Haddock.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Next, we come to items from Equalization, Abatement Application.
Good morning, Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. I have brought a request for an abatement before you. We have a property owner who purchased a property, applied for, qualifies for the owner-occupied classification, but there was an error in our process, the tax software, and it dropped it. The abatement is for the difference between the owner-occupied and the non-owner-occupied.
Move for approval of the abatement.
Second.
Moved by DeSanto, seconded by Haddock for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, by aye in a roll call vote.
Buschardt.
Aye.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Farby.
Aye.
Haddock.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Commissioners are on it today, but when I say all by aye, they're holding back, the aye part.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon. Items from the Extension, I'll recognize Matt.
The two Matts. Good morning, Commissioners, Matthew Olson.
Matt one.
SDSU Extension 4-H's Program Advisor.
And I'm Matt Oden, the President of the Pennington County Extension Advisory Board.
So, the first item up we have here is the Memorandum of Understanding between SDSU Extension and the Counties of South Dakota. This comes up every year, so it's been submitted for your review and approval. If you have any questions, we can answer any you might have.
Move approval.
Moved by Haddock.
Second.
Seconded by DeSanto. All in favor, roll call vote.
Buschardt.
Aye.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Farby.
Aye.
Haddock.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Okay, next.
So, the next item we have is just our Pennington County 4-H End-of-Year Report. I was hoping Jane Amiot would be here with us, but she's still out programming at Central High School, so I apologize for her not being with us today. As I mentioned, I'm Matthew Olson, I work over at the Extension Office as the 4-H Advisor here in Pennington County. And Jane is also a 4-H Advisor that works with us in our office and her contact information is up on the screen if anybody wants to get a hold of her. But today, what I'd essentially like to go over with you is, you know, what is 4-H? What we do over at our office in terms of programming and then our goals for the future. So, you know, every year I go over this and the reason I do it is so that people out in Pennington County can hopefully get a better understanding of what we do if they're happening to watch this online. So, 4-H, as you may know, is a 4-H, is a youth development programming focusing on leadership, citizenship, and life skills that will benefit our 4-H members for their entire lives. It's open to youth five to eighteen years old, five to seven-year-olds are what we call Cloverbud members and eight to eighteen-year-olds are 4-H members. It's open to any youth in Pennington County regardless of age, gender, racial status. It's, anybody that wants to join can join. It's administered through USDA, SDSU Extension, and Pennington County cooperatively. So, federal government, state government, and Pennington County all put in funds to support the program. And our youth can be involved through 4-H Clubs, whether they're the traditional clubs where they come and have meetings at the 4-H building or they have a 4-H Club at the school. They can also be involved in school enrichment programs and then special interest groups throughout the year. So, for this past year, what I'd like to go over is our club enrollment numbers, the summer camps that we held, our Central States Fair activities, school outreach programming, library programming, and then the M.I.P.I. program. So, this year, this past year, we did have another strong year in our enrollment numbers for our 4-H Clubs. We had four hundred and ninety-six enrolled 4-H Club members. Those are the ones that are having usually monthly meetings, going and doing community service projects, learning about their project areas, that sort of thing. Across the whole state, we had nine thousand three hundred and fifty-eight members statewide. So, Pennington County ranked second in our 4-H Club enrollments, second only to Minnehaha County, which is the other big one in the state. Our total program reach this year, when we look at, you know, the library programs, the school enrichment programs, our 4-H Clubs, was one thousand nine hundred and twenty youth through all the programs that we've done. And some of our day camps, we did this past year, we held four sessions of day camps at the 4-H Building. One was on rocketry, robot, one was on rocketry, robotics, sport fishing, and then what we called survival, learning about outdoor skills, camping, and that sort of thing. So, these are just some pictures from those day camps. You know, when we did the survival, we took them out on hikes in the Black Hills. When we did the sport fishing, we took them out to the Outdoor Campus West so that they could do some fishing there. And so, for some of these youth, it was the first time they've been able to get out in the Black Hills and experience some of this stuff. As usual, we had a great turnout at the Central States Fair. Hopefully, some of you were able to get to the 4-H Building and see the projects that our 4-H members exhibited. We did receive comments from the public that this was, you know, one of the best years that they've seen in the 4-H Building with all the exhibits and it's always a joy for them to go in the building and see what they're doing. But we did have, one of our things that you may not think about when you think of 4-H is our robotics challenge. That's what two of these pictures are, is our 4-H members, they met throughout the year with their team, built a robot, and they had a challenge set for them that they then had to complete during the fair. So, that's them doing that. And then for our school outreach programming, that's done by Jane in our office. So, she goes out to the Rapid City Area Schools and usually does a one-hour session on something that's related to agricultural natural resources. So, you can see here down on the bottom left-hand picture is a program she did with soils. And the bottom right is learning about animals in South Dakota. So, you can see there's a coyote pelt there that they're learning about. So, that's what Jane does with the school outreach programming. She also goes to the Rapid City Library and does programming with younger kids, usually age, ages three to seven is who come to that and that's on Tuesday mornings out at the library. Again, usually does a topic related to agricultural natural resources. So, the left-hand picture is youth that are making vests that, it's to represent the different parts of a tree that they can wear and then understand how a tree works. Then on the top right is backbone activities, so they're learning about the skeletal structure of frogs. And then the bottom picture, they're learning about watermelons. So, those are the programs that she does at the library. And then new this year was a program that is on a grant through the University of Georgia and that's called the My Preparedness Initiative. It's similar to the TEENSERT program that emergency management does. It's all about getting youth ready in case a natural disaster strikes and how they can be prepared and help the community. So, in the top left-hand picture, they're learning how to use a fire extinguisher to extinguish fires. They're getting trained in CPR. And then I'm not quite sure what the rest of the pictures are, but that's what the M.I.P.I. program is about and that's what Jane is out doing right now at Central High School, is working with those youth. And she was hopefully going to make it, but unfortunately didn't. So, our goals and projects for the 2018-19 year, these were mostly set by Jane because as some of you may know, I'll be leaving Pennington County on November 30th. And so, Jane set forth these goals for the next 4-H year. So, that's to graduate twenty-five students from the South Dakota Youth Preparedness Initiative, also known as M.I.P.I., continue with elementary school programming starting in January 2019, continue the Summer Day Camp Workshop Series in 2019. And then she'll temporarily fill in with 4-H duties until another 4-H Youth Program Advisor is hired and then guide and assist the new 4-H Youth Program Advisor when they are hired. So, if you have any questions on our year in review, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Matt. Mr. Buschardt.
You know, I can't figure out why you'd want to go to Florida after a day like today. That is where you're going, isn't it?
Yes.
I think we're gonna be sad to see you go. You've done a good job.
Thank you.
Mr. DeSanto.
I would have to agree, Matt's done an excellent job and we will hopefully fill your shoes and move forward.
Thank you.
Congratulations and enjoy your new position.
It was not an easy decision. I've thoroughly enjoyed my time in Pennington County and I've come to call it home, but for my career future, I have to move on sometimes, so...
Done well, Matt.
Mr. Haddock, Jim.
I just think he's done well and he's moved us forward to the next step. And do they know who the replacement's gonna be, Matt?
So, I did have a conversation with Holly on how that process will work. Pennington County will get a reimbursement from SDSU for the months that you're without a second 4-H Advisor since you guys do contribute money to SDSU. As I understand it, SDSU should process that automatically and send it, but just a heads up that the Extension Advisory Board and Holly will keep an eye out to make sure that that comes. As I understand it, my position has to be vacant for a certain amount of time before they can advertise a position and then it has to be open for applicants for a certain amount of time. So, Custer and Fall River County, they lost their 4-H Advisor in June and they're just now getting to interviews. So, I'm not sure exactly how long the process will take. They are in the process of hiring a new SDSU State 4-H Program Director. Their hope is that January 1st, that person will start and I'm guessing that once that person starts, though, these processes will be going quicker since they have a leader at the state level again.
Thank you, Matt.
Matt, I just, I just want to say to the 4-H Committee, when I first got on the Commission, I was part of your board and assigned to that and I think it was a great learning... Matt, I just, I just want to say to the 4-H committee, when I first got on the commission, I was part of your board and assigned to that, and I think it was a great learning experience from my side because I've never been in the farm. I rode some stairs and stuff, but not, not nothing to the extent. So you guys taught me quite a bit, and I was proud to be part of the interviewing process for some of the young people to Washington and that you guys are doing. I know we didn't get that done last year, but I think that's a great experience for these young people. And both Matts, I think you guys are welcoming to everybody that walks in that building and try to teach everybody, and I appreciate that. I would have been down at the recognition meeting last Saturday, but by the time I caught what time it was with the time change, it threw me off. But I, I think this board and our community really appreciates what you guys both do. And Matt, we'll be sorry to see you leave, but we, we never want to hold anybody back from their future.
Thank you.
So?
The, the next item is, I'll let Matt present it.
Yeah, so our, our next item would be some, some improvements to be made at the, at the Extension Office there. It's for replacing the fluorescent lighting in the meeting room with LED fixtures, replacing the exterior lighting with LED lighting, installing some large industrial ceiling fans in the auditorium area. That area does not have air conditioning, so that would be very nice. And then the last would be purchase of a, a new laptop computer setup. What we've found ourselves with right now is due to the fact that we had no staff assistant for the months of January, February, and March, as well as the fact that our staff assistant is not on the county's insurance. We've found that we, we have, we're coming in about fifteen thousand under budget. So we're looking at some improvements that are really probably, in my opinion, long overdue, some of these for the, for the building. Things that will be hopefully energy and money-saving down the road and, and things that just kind of make sense. The, the computer system is not due this year, but as I understand it, it would be due next year. And since we're, we're looking at getting a new program advisor, our thought is that start them out with, just go ahead and since we have the funds right now, take that from the budget now and utilize it. And start them out with a brand-new computer setup rather than one year into their time having to get them to adjust to a new computer system. I, I guess at this point, I think what we're really asking for is, is just your, your approval or blessing on this because we do have the funds in our current budget.
This was taken to the Extension Advisory Board at their October first meeting. Commissioner DeSanto asked that we bring it before you guys.
Sounds good. So you're looking for a motion to approve the expenditures for lighting, ceiling fans, and laptop.
Yeah, it'll be the whole computer system. Because I think there's more than just a laptop to it. There's.
With a total nine thousand five twelve ninety-seven would be the total.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Hickock.
Second.
Seconded by DeSanto. End discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Since we have our auditor here, our auditor-elect, whatever he wants to be called, how do we, can we move it? Do we need a motion or something to move it from the, from the salary line down to a, a? Expenditure for equipment?
No, we do not. As long as they don't go over their bottom-line budget for the year, it's fine.
They can, we can do that.
Yes.
Okay. Because at one time, I think we had passed something that said you can't do that.
I think that was an internal motion at one time from the board.
Yeah, all right, but you don't care.
Bottom line is for auditing purposes with the state and us, it's the bottom line for the budget.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Hickock?
I did check with, Mr. Cool, thank you for your time yesterday, and they do have the spending authority. In fact, it sounds like they didn't have to come to us if they didn't want to, and they decided to do that. So I thought that was pretty, pretty honest. And I believe because this is our building, you're going to save money on LED lighting. The fans make sense because it is hotter than heck in there. Been in there. And the IT for the computer is just getting ahead of it, and we all do that in business, let alone the 4-H. So makes sense what you're doing. Thank you for all you do.
Mr. DeSanto?
You know, when you need a spoon to eat your lemon meringue pie because the building is so hot that it's melted into a puddle during the pie eating, yeah, we, we, you need a little circulation in that room.
My comment would be, I, I think you got the approval, we'll take a vote on it, but I want to thank you guys. You guys' board has, has always been frugal. And I think with the savings, you've seen that, you needed to, seen the improvements that you needed, and it's going to benefit not only the county with the building, but yourself. And switching over to LED and putting those fans is, is a wise choice of, of the funds that you had. And I think you guys, I appreciate you keeping the, the board updated on what's going on. It helps.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing.
Mr. Buscud.
Uh, I think I've said it before, we just already approved that we're going to spend five or six million dollars on the bad guys. And just spend, turn around, spend ten thousand dollars on the good kids is probably not outrageous.
Good point, Ron.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
So the motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye with a roll call vote.
Buscud?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Aye.
Hickock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Matt, we'll see you.
Yes.
Before you leave.
Cool, we got, is it ten o'clock? Oh, we're going along just fine, kids.
Items from Highway Department. MOU from the city of Rapid City in Pennington County for snow removal.
Good morning. Mark Schock, Pennington County Highway. Before you this morning is a memorandum of understanding between the city of Rapid City and Pennington County Highway Department for snow removal on certain Pennington County and Rapid City roads. Essentially, it's an agreement that allows each entity to do small segments of the other entity's road for snow removal. In many cases, it prevents one entity from traveling many miles with their, their plow in the air and inefficiently traveling to and out of the way area. So the other entity can remove the snow for them, and it makes a much more timely and efficient service between the two entities and the traveling public in both entities. We would ask for a motion to, or we would recommend a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding for the years 2018 through 2021.
I'm moved.
Second.
Moved by Hickock, seconded by Buscud for approval. Any discussion?
Just one quick. You guys are efficient and effective team in Pennington County for snow removal, and you have been known for years to be that. So we are proud of the Highway Department and how you guys have done that. So I always hear compliments. Once in a while, we have a few that we need to take care of, but majority, ninety percent, you guys are very effective and efficient. So thank you and your team.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Proud of them.
Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye in the roll call vote.
Buscud?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Aye.
Hickock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Can we come to a point in the agenda, folks, where I, I don't think we can do the exact session because that's going to take too long, I believe. It could be.
Can we do eighteen?
That's up to the board whether they want to jump to?
Eighteen, nineteen, and twenty?
If they want to take up items eighteen A and B.
I have no issue with that.
And nineteen, twenty.
That'd be my motion, Lloyd.
Motion made by Hickock to take up items eighteen A and B to nineteen and twenty now.
I would second that motion.
That is seconded by Mr. DeSanto. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye with a roll call vote.
Buscud?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Oh.
No?
No, yep.
Hickock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye. Motion passes four to one to take up items eighteen A, B, nineteen, and twenty. Four ayes, one no from Mr. Farby. Item number eighteen A, Governor's Holiday Closure for Christmas Eve, Commissioner LaCroy. I brought this up because, well, I'll recognize John. Go ahead, John, explain. He would do a much better job than I can.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. So at the request of, of Chair LaCroy, we've looked into this, and, and you should be aware, the governor issued this on October tenth. And when I say this, he announced that they were going to have some additional closed holidays to be recognized for state employees, for the administrative offices. They will be closing this year on Friday, November twenty-third for Thanksgiving. We already recognize it as a holiday in the county. And he also granted administrative leave for the entire day of December twenty-fourth, Christmas Eve, and then December thirty-first for the day before New Year's. So we looked into past practice, and there's been discussions about what to do in this situation in the past. What I would say is that in some of the, the surrounding counties that we, we've visited with on what they're doing. So for example, in Aberdeen, they're granting that as an additional full day off for their employees. In Meade County, just next door, they're granting that as an additional full day off for their employees. Hughes County, over there, Hughes and Stanley, again, so Hughes is granting it as an additional day off, and as is Minnehaha. My recommendation actually would be that we consider closing for that entire day as well, in the interest really of efficiency and of that really respected in time for our employees to spend some time with their families. And it, it's not very advantageous for us, at least in my opinion, to open for that four-hour session on that Monday, and then only to close again for the next day and a half. So that would be my recommendation, would be to, to additional, add some additional closure hours on that Monday, the December twenty-fourth, to allow the, the employees to have the long weekend with their families.
I'll make that motion for discussion.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded for approval. Discussion, I'll just clarify a little bit. It's for four hours.
Yes, sir.
And employees can work through their lunch, stay an hour, along with their supervisor's approval, they could make up that. It doesn't have to be taken up.
Right, right. They've, there's several options there. So they could take it as unpaid time if they chose to do so. They could use vacation, holiday, whatever else they have available, and/or choose to work additional hours during the week with the approval of their departments.
Okay.
Yeah, very true. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify, is there any further discussion?
Oh, thank you, Lloyd.
Seeing none, motion on the floor is for approval. All in favor, say aye by roll call vote.
Buscud?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby? Is he?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Hickock?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, folks. Next, we come to item B, Festival Lights Parade Participants' Application and Participant Indemnification Statement of Financial Responsibility and a Waiver for Pennington County and ESCC Employee Association. Holly?
Yes, Commissioners, I'll just make a clarification. I was informed late yesterday that the nine-one-one Employees Association have chosen not to do a float this year. So we're now just seeking approval of the chairman's signature on the participant agreement and a waiver for Pennington County as an entity to participate in that parade.
Okay.
Can you explain the waiver?
Could, could you explain the waiver?
Sorry, the waiver, what does that mean and why do they have to do it, Ms. Holly?
There's a, they, the parade organizers asked us to sign a waiver in, in the event that there's something happens, that there's an accident, that whoever is doing it has the ability to take care or handle a third-party claim in the event of something happening. So that's the reason we brought it in front of the commission is we didn't feel we had the authority to indemnify the county in participating in this parade.
Basically, we won't be held liable if anything happens when?
We hope not, but it's one of those things that you never know when an accident's going to happen or something happens. So we just wanted to make sure it was open and honest and transparent for the board and, and show you that, that participant agreement has some pretty strong language in it, and just want to make sure we're all covered and protected.
I think this is a, a great idea for team building plus representation in Pennington County. I know, maybe Lloyd was telling me how many people are already from the county, like the sheriff and stuff, actually participate in, but he can probably fill you in with the other details. But I actually was involved in getting lights for Rapid City, and this parade has been a part of a great holiday celebration. So to add us, Pennington County, to it, I think is pretty cool, so.
There's a lot of employees already excited about it. To win all with this being our first attempt, Highway Department is offering one of their snow plows for us to decorate. We won't have any riders on, on it, but the CDL driver will operate it in the parade route. So we'll make sure we have the qualified person to drive it. And we're excited to get together on a Saturday and decorate for a few hours and, and enter the snowplow.
Thanks, Holly. It looks like Mark wants to say some.
Just here to, to help a little bit. Holly, Holly's getting this going for us, and if, if it's decided that it'll be approved by the, the commission. We do have a nineteen seventy-four Oshkosh four-wheel drive. It's a total of about ten feet tall. It's got a V, big V plow on the front, about six feet tall, eight feet wide. What else we got? An eight-foot wing on the side. It's an oldie but a goodie. We have several of them at the Highway Department that are, are basically, they're our standby plows for big snows. We only use them in blizzards anymore, just because they're, they're four-wheel drive and they're old. Some of them, parts are not available anymore. They have to make parts for them if something breaks. So they're, they are reserves that sit back in the shed most of the time, but it's an oldie but a goodie. It's in pretty good condi, condition as far as paint-wise. It'd make a pretty nice appearance in the parade, I believe.
Do you have a name for that?
The what was that?
I heard you have a name for that machine.
Yes. We, we, it, it, it's a.
Funny mark, you can say.
It's impressive. It, it's big. We'd like to put some candy in the back and, and use the spinner and spin some candy to the kids, but I guess there's no candy throwing allowed in the parade.
That's a good concept.
So the name was Big Bertha, which is, it's big.
We don't want to have a motion on the floor, but what I would suggest is, you know, originally nine-one-one was going to do it. If we make a motion, we approve both, just in case they change their mind.
Okay.
In, within.
I agree.
Not a bad idea.
Things could change in the short period of time, and they might change it. So we have no motion on the floor at this point in time.
So the motion would be what, sir?
To approve the chair's signature on participating agreements and waivers for Pennington County and nine-one-one Employees Association to participate in the twenty eighteen parade lights.
That'd be my motion.
Motion's made.
Second.
Seconded by Buscud. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye with a roll call vote.
Buscud?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Aye.
Hickock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we come to item nineteen, Committee Reports. I'll start from left to right. Ms. Hickock?
Just want to invite the Commissioners. We're going to make some chili and have a feed for the volunteer fire department for all their work this year. That will be on Wednesday, the fourteenth. Thank you to Pepper and Ms. Joan from our office, and Ms. Holly. We're giving out some little candy bags and some different things for everything they've done. Like we said, about five hundred and thirty volunteer fire department, volunteer fire department, and we do have some career people that participate. They've had a pretty, pretty extensive year, so would like to come to that.
would like to come to that, and...
Where is that located, Deb?
Sorry, that's the E.O.C., here in our county building, at six o'clock. So...
That's it? For now?
I'll probably remember later, but I think it's like...
I know that, I know that feeling.
That was the most thing I needed to remember to say before I forgot, so.
Okay, I remember that feeling, Mark, do you have any?
Nothing to report.
I can report, I'm probably about the same as Deb, I kind of lose track sometimes of which ones are which, but I think the most important one I'd update on is the meeting with the Mayor Larson and Allender, and some of the discussions as far as that went, we got a presentation from Law Enforcement on Keystone Pipeline, and I can pretty much tell you what the discussion was, is we're going to reach out to them, TransCanada, and ask for, to be able to have some discussions with them on public meetings, possibly having some public meetings, so we can have more information. That was part of that discussion, just yesterday, we had the Compensation Committee meeting, I will say, the Compensation Committee meetings have been very well, they're reviewing, John's here, they're reviewing job descriptions, and I think John's looking into trying to find in some different form, so we don't have to do the Congress study every four years, we may have to, but I mean, we're looking at trying to keep things up to date, and job descriptions being as they are, need to be, not just changing job names, just change job names and so forth, but I'm really impressed with our Compensation Committee about how interested they are into it, and trying to get things right and be right for, not only for us, but also the employees. I'm sure there's a couple other meetings I missed, but if I didn't make no notes, I don't think I have anything to report from you. Thanks. Anything more?
Mr. Chairman, I do not have a committee report, but I would like to take a moment of personal privilege, if I may.
I, I think that's okay. Board?
Sure, here.
Ms. Busker's asking for it, okay.
After watching the Western Dakota Water Meeting, I do not appreciate very much being called nasty names by a Commissioner. I think it's inappropriate, I think you violated, once again, the code of ethics that we have. I guess I am just going to inform you that from now on, and I was hoping George was going to be here today, I'm going to be moving my seat down by Commissioner Haddock, because I no longer wish to be associated close to or by George, I don't even consider him a Commissioner anymore after the antics he's pulled in the last month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscrew. Anything else?
One more thing.
Ms. Haddock.
Mine's the opposite, I did send a thank-you letter to the Journal, and it hasn't been published, I sent it a couple times, for the people that helped volunteer on my campaign and donated, so, again, kind of a personal privilege, but I never could get that out, but I appreciate, again, everybody who's helped me on my campaign as well, and, again, the staff at, with Cindy and everything they did to help me to understand every year what I have to do and make sure it gets done, and I think they do that for every candidate, and that's a lot of work, so I appreciate everything you guys have done for us, again, because it takes a lot, because you have to remember those dates and those times and make sure you get it on, I always have to check with them again and again, and probably drive them nuts, like normal, but I appreciate it, but other candidates have told me how much they appreciated what your staff does as well, so, thank you for all you guys do, and thank you to the volunteers that have helped me.
Thanks, Deb, I will say, I want to thank Mr. Buscrew for his professionalism, he asked for a moment of privilege to address an item that, that quite frankly shouldn't have happened to him or anybody else who's in public service at a different meeting, and so, thanks, Ron, for that professionalism, a lot of people wouldn't have taken it, been that polite about it, with that, I'd like to offer George now opportunity to address that, George?
I have no comment at this time, but at later date, I will, thank you.
Okay, so, anytime we bring up a name, we give an option for a response, out of respect, thanks, folks. We're going to move on to item number twenty, Approval of the Vouchers.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve three-hundred-and-ninety-eight, five-fifty-seven, twenty-six of the vouchers, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye in the roll call vote.
Buscrew?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Nay.
Farabee?
No.
Haddock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye, motion carries three to two, right now, we have about twelve minutes before the beginning...
Motion for break, sir.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to go to break, all in favor, aye with a roll call vote.
Buscrew?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farabee?
Aye.
Haddock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye, we're at break. Okay, George, you online?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, we're going to come back into session, I'd look for a motion to go into the Board of Adjustments.
Still moved.
And moved.
Second.
Seconded by Buscrew to go into Board of Adjustments, all in favor by aye in a roll call vote.
Buscrew?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farabee?
Aye.
Haddock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye, we're in Board of Adjustments.
Good morning, Cassie Bosted, so, item A is our first variance on Board of Adjustment, this is variance eighteen-fourteen, a request to reduce the minimum required front yard setback on the east property line from twenty-five feet to zero feet for an existing attached garage, the applicant is Burton Dart, he is here in the audience today, if you do have any questions for him, as this property exists today, it is Zone General Agriculture District, it is ten acres located off of Cedar Butte Road, there is no special flood hazard on this property, and it currently contains a double-wide mobile home, an attached garage, a shop, and two barns, this variance request was routed through the interdepartmental review process, and nothing of significant concern came back, this variance request came about due to an ordinance violation that was opened in August for the attached garage that was constructed without a building permit, the applicant has had several conversations with staff within our office, when he constructed the garage, he measured the setback distance from the center of the road, and that distance is approximately forty-one feet, staff did discuss obtaining a survey of the property with the applicant, he did go out and contact several surveyors, and was told that that would cost thousands of dollars, because this is out kind of in the middle of nowhere, it's way north of Wall, and it's currently an unplatted piece of property, there's nothing platted out there, so they would have to do an entirely new survey, find all of the corners, do all of that kind of stuff, so it would cost an exorbitant amount of money, so due to the cost of obtaining a survey, he is requesting to reduce the setback to zero feet, as it does not appear that the garage crosses the property line, but he's not sure the exact distance to the property line, if the variance is approved, he will be required to obtain a building permit for the garage, and in addition, during review of the property, staff was unable to locate a building permit for the double-wide that's currently on the property, D.O.E., Department of Equalization has it placed on the property in approximately nineteen-ninety-seven, we don't have a building permit for that, so he will also need to permit that as well. The criteria for the variance request that the Board needs to consider, the first criteria is that specific circumstances or conditions, such as exceptional inerrancy topography or sighting exist, staff has verified through aerial images and discussions with the applicant that the garage was constructed approximately in two thousand and thirteen, the second criteria is that the variance does not grant a use which is otherwise excluded from that district, it would not grant a use otherwise excluded from a general agriculture district, that due to the specific circumstance or existing conditions, strict application of the zoning ordinance would be an unwarranted hardship, strict application of the zoning ordinance in this case would require him to meet or exceed a twenty-five-foot setback from that property line, which would require him to remove a portion of the existing garage, and would likely require him to have to have the property surveyed as well, since we're not sure exactly how far it is from the property line at this point, and then the fourth criteria is that granting of the variance is not contrary to the public interest and is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, granting this would allow for a reduced setback in a general agriculture district, which is not in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, but staff has not received any complaints or comments from the public relative to this request, so if the Board of Adjustment chooses to approve this variance, staff recommends three conditions be included.
Thanks, Cassie, is the applicant like to make any comments?
No.
Any comments from the Commission?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
How far is the applicant's residence from any other residence nearby? Two miles? How far is your residence from any other residence nearby?
Please identify yourself at the mic to respond, thanks.
Close to a couple miles, probably.
And you're Burton?
Yeah.
Got to give your name.
And you get, for the record, you need to tell us your name, Burton.
Burton Dart.
Okay, thanks, Burton.
It's a couple miles, right? Okay, thank you, that's all I need to know.
Chairman?
Mrs. Haddock.
So, sir, this garage was built in two thousand and thirteen?
Yeah.
Did you build it, or did somebody else build it?
I had a contractor build it.
Okay, and he didn't know he needed to get the building permit?
Actually, that was kind of the, he was supposed to get it, and he just went ahead and built it, or, you know, we were...
Thought he got a building permit?
Well, yeah, kind of, I talked to the Township Board, and they kind of advised me to just go ahead and build it, so.
What township is that?
Cedar Butte.
Oh. So, Cassie, do you have, so you have a picture of the road, how far is this garage from the road, did you say?
From road center, it's about forty-one feet, right, Burton?
Yeah, I measured it, yeah.
I'll be up straight, without a, you have a contractor build it, he built it without a building permit, and if you were affecting other people, that should make a difference in one sense, but the other, it does, there needs to be some change in our, in our, the way we do our business, guys, because we're having a lot of people doing this, and if people have license and they're licensed contractors, and they're doing this to the people, and then they have to come back and pay the fee when it's already built and set and done, we need some changes in Pennington County, so, I have to think about it, thank you.
Burton, do you, this is an attached garage to the house, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, that was a little bit different, and Cassie, he's going to get caught up, because there's a couple other structures that didn't have permits, so they're going to get caught up, now, throughout all this process, is, is there any late fees or fines that, from any of this?
There will be penalty fee, or, on the building permits, he could actually, since it's an attached garage, he could permit the double-wide and the attached garage in one building permit, but there will be the penalty fees on the building permit.
So, my question to you, Burton, you understand there's going to be, since you didn't have the building permits to start out with, what's going to come is you're going to end up getting some penalties and doubled fines and so forth, and, so if you come back here wanting us to waive those, I'm not going to support those.
No, I understand.
Okay, that's what I was, I wanted to make clear before we go to a vote, further discussion?
Move for approval.
It's been moved for approval with three conditions.
With the three conditions.
All second, further discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Haddock.
So, what, what is the consequence, is the only thing that could happen because he didn't, his contractor didn't follow the rules, is he'd have to tear his garage down?
Yeah. He'd have to get it, more than likely, he'd have to get this property surveyed to know exactly how much of the garage he would have to remove to meet that twenty-five-foot setback, because right now, we don't, he's, we're not really certain where exactly the property line is, how far away he is from it, so he'd have to get it surveyed to figure out how much of the garage to remove, unless he just wanted to remove the garage entirely.
And we know he's not affecting any other property by his zero-degree setback.
Right, is there even anybody north of you on Cedar Butte Road? You're kind of at the end of Cedar Butte, aren't you?
No, there is one other place way, way north.
Way north.
Yeah, it's owned by my nephew.
So, I guess I'm not seeing, do you have a closer picture of the zero-degree setback and where that is to the road, do you have a better picture of it than just the map?
I don't, I didn't go all the way out there for this one.
Yeah, my main issue is that there was no building permit, but the zero-degree setback doesn't bother me unless it's, you didn't survey it, and there could be an issue later with if they build the road, or if you sell your property. I'm not going to make you tear down your garage, not today, but in the future. But in the future, I think if we don't change the rules, I'm going to have to get a little bit harder, because it's, it's two thousand and thirteen, it's not nineteen-ninety-seven, you know what I'm saying? And most of us in two thousand and thirteen know we need a building permit for any garage or anything, sir. All right, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Buscrew.
Yeah, I agree with you, as long as this gentleman agrees to the three recommendations, it's going to cost him some money, I guess I'm more disappointed in the Township Board saying, yeah, go ahead and build it, it doesn't matter, they acquit the county rules, that's who should be reprimanded.
I guess you should pay the fines.
So, we have a motion for approval, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye during the roll call vote.
Buscrew?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farabee?
Aye.
Haddock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye. Thanks, Burton. PJ, item B.
Item B is variance eighteen-fifteen, and the applicant's applying for variance to section three-twelve of the Pennington County zoning ordinance to allow a plane on a pole on a, in a highway service district, the applicant is Fattaboyes LLC, Bob Fuchs is the agent who is in the audience today for questions, the subject property is one-point-six-two acres, this application is similar to, or identical, I would say, to the one that was on, at an I-90 that was approved by this board earlier this year, the plans actually came back with the title, pole-mounted airplane, one-seventy-third Avenue and I-90, to be used for the Hill City location, so it is the exact same item, so if you've been by out of I-90 to see it, that's what it's going to look like, I assume, we don't know about the color yet, the subject property, again, is one-point-six-two acres, has special flood hazard area floodway on the property, the reason for the variance is the applicant came in, applied for a signed permit for this item, and is requesting to waive section three-twelve A-eleven and section three-twelve A-twenty-one, section three-twelve A-eleven, got to find it here, basically is for the height of an on-premise sign, so on-premise signs can't be over thirty feet, and it's in the plans over thirty-three feet, the second item that he's asking to waive is, signs can only be two-sided, and with this plane on a pole being now officially acknowledged as a sign, because he filled out a signed permit, not just a regular building permit, it's a three-dimensional item and not two-sided like signs are supposed to be, the intention of the plane on the pole is to attract attention regardless of what color it is or what it says on the plane, it's designed to attract attention to the subject property, staff also feels that it violates the spine ordinance as far as the use of vehicles as a sign, we feel that it meets the definition of Black Law Sixth Edition Dictionary as a vehicle, the applicant does not agree that it is a vehicle, and therefore did not ask to have that item waived in his request, this was ratified through interdepartmental review, besides pretty much everybody thinking it was a really cool idea, there was some concern about it being in the floodway, but as far as the engineered information that we did get from Engineer Steve Tinkelstad, it is in the conveyance shadow of the existing structure, and should not cause a rise in the floodway, so we don't really have an issue with that part of this specific request, Hill City didn't mention that they do agree with our interpretation that it is a vehicle, and that should also have been included into the request, South Dakota Department of Transportation, who was... the request. South Dakota Department of Transportation, who was adamantly against the one on I-90, because this one is not on as major of a road and is an on-premise sign, as opposed to an off-premise sign, they don't have any objection to this new request. There are some items that need to be considered for variances. The first is that specific circumstances or conditions such as exceptional narrowness, topography, and sighting exist. Staff has verified through a site visit that there is no particular circumstances or conditions that warrant it, such as exceptional narrowness, topography, or sighting which warrant approval of this variance. Item B, that the variance is not granted use which is otherwise excluded from this particular district. Granting this variance does not allow a use that would otherwise be excluded in this highway service district. The third item, that due to the specific circumstances or existing conditions, strict application of the zoning ordinance would be an unwarranted hardship, and there does not appear to be a hardship for the applicant which warrants approval of VA 1815. The last item to consider is that the granting of the variance would not be contrary to the public interest and is harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. Granting VA 1815 does not appear to be contrary to the public interest, but would allow for a second plane on a pole in Pennington County, which does not appear to be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinances. Staff has only... As of today, staff has only received one phone call in protest of... Or an opposition, not necessarily protest, an opposition of this request. It was brought up during staff conversations as far as the plane possibly, you know, the pole tipping over. According to the plans, the pole itself is gonna be twenty feet into the ground, and then attached with some bolts, and then whatever happens after that, how high it's going to be to the top of the plane. We looked at, with telecommunications facility permits, or basically cell towers, the setbacks they need to be from their property lines is 1.1 times the height. If this was approved at thirty-three and seven and seven eighths, we're looking at just under thirty-seven, thirty-eight feet, that he would have to be setback from the road. And in the proposed location, he's about, just around fifty feet. So he would meet that setback if the entire thing was to fall over onto its side. So that did come up in conversation, but not necessarily something that we need to consider, but I wanted to bring it up here, because it wasn't in the staff report. So with that, if the Board of Adjustment chooses to approve VA 1815, staff would recommend four conditions be included.
Clarification. PJ, when I was reading through this and I seen the vehicle deal, so what's the difference between semi-trailer with writing on it and fire trucks along the...
I don't want to get into the fire truck part of it, because I know that's...
Well, in all fairness, when you bring up vehicle, and you're calling... I mean, I just want some clarification.
With trucks on the side, if the primary use of that vehicle is not a sign, it is exempt from that part of the ordinance.
Okay, I'm sidetracking, ain't I?
No, no. With a lot of the trailers that are out there, if they have said, "Well, the primary use is I do use it as a trailer, and sometimes it has a sign on it," there's not much we can do with that. I know with the Cessna that they're gonna put up there, the engine's been removed, so the primary use is not an airplane. So it's not exempt. The intent of it is to attract attention, which is the purpose of a sign to the facility.
Okay. Bob, did you want any comments, or do you want to go to the board first? You can comment, Bob.
Whichever you'd like. I'm just... Bob Fuchs with the Firehouse Brewing Company. I'm good with the conditions as outlined by PJ. I do want to note, I do have a court case that had to do, actually, with the Unabomber, and the federal judge ruled that a plane is not a vehicle. So that's what we're basing this on, that we do have a federal ruling on that. And then number two, the plane will look really sharp. We're gonna paint it identical to what we have out on the interstate now. In addition to that, as you can see on the picture, we're going to... We've spent a lot of money sprucing up this building. It was a lawnmower shop and a propane place, and it looks much better already. The tanks are all removed, the trucks are gone, the propane trucks are gone. Next thing, we do have a bid or a permit in with PJ now and FEMA, that we're going to asphalt the entire parking lot there. So all that gravel will go away, and then we will be coming back with grass and things like that around the asphalt. So we're gonna spruce that property up quite a bit. So we're not trying to make this look like a circus. We want to make it look really sharp, and we're gonna put a lot of money and effort into the building in addition to what we've done already.
Thanks, Bob. Is there any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
Bob, I have a suggestion. Plane's got props on it, right?
Correct.
Turn it into a windmill and call it a windmill.
Wind energy.
Alternative power source.
Yes, I was gonna say, wind energy, you're to 'em.
The props will turn.
Any other...
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
As chairman... Or chairman. PJ, has there been any other complaints on the one? There's been one on this, but how about on I-90?
Yes, not from the public, from the national highways.
Okay, we're good then. Just kidding.
They actually came down on state highway that was there.
Yep.
And they have a big issue with it.
Thank you.
I informed the applicant of that as soon as we heard. And the court case that he brought up, again, Michelle Hoffman from State Attorney's Office is not here, but she found that court case not to apply to the situation, and explained to their attorney at the time that it wasn't applicable. But she would know why, but I'm just saying, at the time, it was... You're not comparing apples and apples.
Well, for me, I've seen it, and I do like it. It brings attention, and Mr. Fuchs does a lot for the community, and his buildings are very well taken care of. And like you said, when he does something, he does it right. So I appreciate everything he does. Just a question, Mr. Fuchs. Where did you get Fatter Boys LLC?
Our original corporate name...
I don't think I've ever heard that before, but...
Original corporate name is just Fat Boys, so we needed a new one for this property.
From the beer, is that what?
I've gotten older.
Just teasing you. All right. I'm in favor of it, because I've seen the one out there, and I know maybe the DOT doesn't appreciate it, but I see nothing wrong with it. I think it's a good way to promote your business, and that only helps our community. Thank you.
I would move for approval of four conditions.
Now, okay, it's been moved and seconded. One of my concerns is, we were talking about the thirty-three-feet height and bringing it down to thirty.
Thirty is the requirement per the ordinance. The applicant would like it above the thirty, as proposed, I assume.
Well, actually, that...
Going down?
That engineering drawing was exceedingly expensive, so that's why I just used it again and making everything identical. It would... If the board would like, I could drop that whole three feet, seven and seven eighths inches further, and be within that tolerance.
Okay.
If that's necessary. I'd like to build it just the way it's shown, but...
You guys okay with the friendly amendment?
Chairman.
No.
Just a question, Lloyd, for you. There's an engineer drawing on it, and I don't know if the height or... Remember, the wind that goes underneath it and all that other stuff coming to play when you start dropping three feet or adding three feet? Do you see what I'm saying? So I think we should leave it as drawn, just because it is an engineer's drawing.
That's what we're here for, is feedback.
I'm okay either way.
Bob, I think, you know, when I first came up, I had some discussion with staff on this, and I had some hesitation on it, but once I seen the site plan, you know, when you first hear about this, I don't have the site plans. I'm thinking it's gonna be right on the way and going to Hill City, so I'm going, you know, on what side of the hill or something, so it looked like a plane coming out of the hill, you know?
Sure.
You don't know without seeing the pictures, but after seeing the site plan and seeing that it's further back from the road and more along the side of the... It looks like it's gonna be about ten feet back...
Right here, sir.
On the building, yeah. Somewhere's right in there from my picture. I think it's a good idea, and at least we have something to see. I've seen the other one several times now, so I guess I'm in support of the motion makers and secounders' approach. Any further discussion? Any other comments from the public? Hear none. Motion is for approval with the three conditions as written. All in favor... Or four, sorry. The four conditions as written.
Questions, sir?
PJ.
Are we doing the thirty-three and seven and seven eighths? We're not dropping down, right?
No, we're not dropping down.
Keeping the original plan.
Just want to make sure.
Production keeps with the same plan.
Yep.
All in favor, indicate by aye in a roll call vote, please.
Buschrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Aye.
Hancock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye. Looks like... Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item C, Cassie.
All right, last one in Board of Adjustment. This is a variance request eighteen sixteen. This is a request to reduce the minimum required lot size from forty acres to two acres and six point one one acres in a general agriculture district. The applicants are John and Polly Preston. They are in the audience today if you have any questions. They are in the process of plating this property and subdividing it into two separate properties. Currently, it is eight point one two acres. What they're wanting to do is subdivide this into Lot One, which would be two acres, and Lot Two, which would be six point one one acres. Their minor plat was actually approved by the Board of Commissioners on October sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, with ten conditions. The approval of this variance would be one of the options that would satisfy one of the conditions of that minor plat. They either have to obtain approval of this lot size variance for the two proposed lots, or they have to be rezoned appropriately. In order to rezone them appropriately, you would be looking at rezoning them both to suburban residential, or you'd be looking at having to rezone Lot One to suburban residential and Lot Two to low-density residential. So the nearest lot zoned suburban residential in this area is over eight miles as the crow flies to the west. The nearest lot zoned low-density residential is over five miles to the west as the crow flies. So the surrounding current zoning within this entire area, as you can see on the map on the left-hand side, is all general agriculture district. Future land use zoning in this area is either general ag or limited ag for quite a distance. So there are no particular physical conditions that would warrant approval of this lot size variance request, and it would not grant a use which is otherwise excluded from properties zoned as general ag. They're subdividing this essentially to just put two residences each on their own lot. There's a primary residence and a caretaker's residence right now, so that's why they're subdividing this. Strict application of zoning ordinance would require both of those lots to meet the minimum lot size requirement or be rezoned appropriately. And then granting this variance would allow for those lower acre lots in a general agriculture district. Staff has not received any complaints about this. So if the Board of Adjustment chooses to approve variance eighteen sixteen, staff does not recommend any conditions be included, as any concerns or requirements are being addressed through the plating process.
Bill move approval.
Thanks, Cassie. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by DeSanto for approval with no conditions at this point for the variance. Any discussion from the public? Any from the board? See none. We'll do a roll call vote.
Buschrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Aye.
Hancock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. I'd look for a motion to adjourn Board of Adjustment.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Buschrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Aye.
Hancock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye. We're out of Board of Adjustments, and we're to the consent agenda. I'll recognize PJ.
Sure. Thank you. The Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item D, minor plat eighteen thirty-one for Perry and Vicki Van Newkirk, and approval's been recommended. Item E, road construction within a section line right-of-way review sixteen oh two for Cody Shad, and approval's been recommended.
Is there anybody from the audience that'd like anything from the consent agenda removed? Any from the board? See none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved?
Taken.
Seconded by Buschrude to approve the consent agenda. No discussion? Any? We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Buschrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Aye.
Hancock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye. Consent agenda passes unanimously.
Regular agenda... Oh, yep, regular agenda items.
Item F, so. Item F is layout plat eighteen thirty-two for Larry and Lenora Ruland to create tract one of Ruland Ranch subdivision. The subject property mainly is forty-seven point six three acres, but this is an internal lot line adjustment. DC Scott is the agent, and I didn't really have a good chance to look to see if anybody representing the staff report is here today from the applicant or the landowner or the agent. Basically, what you're looking at is, these are the properties that are in question with a number of buildings that have already existed on them. During the review, we found that some of the structures that are placed on the property don't have building permits during or after the planning commission meeting. The staff had a chance to talk with the agent and also with the applicants, and they're aware of what needs to be done to help bring this property into compliance prior to a possible plat being recorded with the Register of Deeds. Some of those buildings were built in two thousand and one and nineteen ninety-nine. All the other structures on the property are either legal non-conforming for... Because of the date that they're put there, or put on with approved building permits from the county. This was routed through the interdepartmental review. Only items of note, back when this originally was done, was that West River Electric would like to hold a meeting with the applicant or the agent, and I believe that that was either scheduled or has already occurred, because the applicants have applied for a minor plat for this same thing, and we've already heard back from West River Electric, where their original plan was, or comments where we have some concerns, we want to talk with them. There are new comments where we don't have any problem. So I'm assuming they're taking care of the things that they were asked to take care of by the planning commission, and this was recommended for approval. Also, the Department of Equalization noted that in the name, the use of the word subdivision was in there, and they just wanted the applicant to know that the use of that word subdivision could take away the tax, the ag status for taxation. The applicant was aware of that, and with the minor plat, they've actually taken that word out and are proposing to not to use the word subdivision any longer. So they are paying attention to what is being said, which we appreciate. No other items of concern came back, as this is a layout plat. This is just an informal preliminary review of the proposed subdivision, and with that, staff would recommend approval of layout plat eighteen thirty-two with nine conditions.
Bill moved.
Taken.
It's been moved by Hancock, seconded by Buschrude. Any discussion from the public? Any from the board? See none. Roll call vote. All in favor, say aye.
Buschrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Aye.
Hancock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
All right, last item. This is a layout plat request. This is plat eighteen thirty-three to create Lot Three revised of Seven Oaks subdivision. The applicant is Stephen Schur. As this property exists today, it is two lots. It is Lot One of Schur, or less Schur dedicated right-of-way of Seven Oaks subdivision, and Lot Three of Seven Oaks subdivision. Both of these properties are zoned general agriculture district. Currently, Lot Three contains a single-family residence. There is no special flood hazard area on this property. What they are proposing to do is combine these two lots into Lot Three revised of Seven Oaks subdivision. This lot would be one point six four eight acres, does not meet the minimum lot size requirements for general agriculture districts, so they will have to rezone it or get a lot size variance. And the proposed plat also does create a sixty-six-foot-wide private access and utility easement across Lot Three revised to serve Lot One revised, and Lot Four, which are both located in Meade County. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process. The Register of Deeds commented that there was some things that needed to be corrected on the plat in terms of removing some additional items that are on there that aren't needed, and then also changing some coloring and annotations. The Department of Equalization did comment that the existing lots are both in two different fire tax districts. So in order to consolidate the lots, they will have to work with one or the other fire department to get annexed into one fire tax district. Otherwise, they still have to be taxed separately for purposes of that. So and then Emergency Services did comment that the existing addresses are off... are off of Potter Road and their access actually comes off of Seven Oaks Trail. Um, so they commented that they may need to re-address that structure, um, off of Seven Oaks Trail rather than off of Potter Road. However, these items do appear to be things that are doable, um, so staff does not see any issue with approving the layout plat. So staff recommended approval of layout plat, 1833 with 15 conditions.
Thanks, Cassie. Is there any questions from the board?
Approval with the 15 conditions per staff recommendation.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Buscud for approval. Any discussion from the public? Seeing none? All in favor say aye in the roll call vote.
Buscud?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Aye.
Hagcock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cassie. Um, one thing I do want to measure, well, that, that brings us to an agenda where we'll go into an executive session. Oh, uh, no, we're not down.
Items from the public first?
Oh, okay, we'll get that. Uh, one of the things I do want to bring up is I think, do we? I was going to read the press release for the Coroll, the cancellation of those meetings for the public record.
That'd be good.
Is that okay with everybody before we, we take public comment? Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, folks. We had an incident where we need to reschedule the, the meetings for the Coroll, uh, mining and some unfortunate circumstances happened, that some stuff didn't get published, so we're going to, uh, we have, it's going to push us back and re, redo some stuff. So what I'd like to do is take a minute and, and, uh, read what went out yesterday. Uh, "The notice of cancellation of the hearings concerning the Coroll Inc.'s application for mining and construction permits. Uh, notices hereby given that the schedule of hearing on November 14th, 2018 before the Pennington County Planning Commission concern, Planning Commission concerning Coroll Inc.'s application for mining and construction permit to operate the Prowl Quarry as a rock quarry has been canceled. The Planning Commission will, will reschedule their hearing at its regular meeting on Tuesday, November 13th, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. in the commission chambers at 130 Kent City Street, Rapid City, South Dakota." Notices here, is here further, hereby given that the schedule of hearings on December 10th, 2018 and December 11th, 2018 before the Pennington County Board of Commissions concerning Coroll Inc.'s application for mining and construction permits to operate the Prowle Quarry as a rock quarry has also been canceled. The Board of County Commissions will reschedule their hearings at a later date. Additional news releases and legal publications will be completed once the hearing dates have been determined. If you have any additional, uh, information or questions, you can contact, uh, the Commissioner's Office, 394-2171. I just wanted to pass that on to make sure everybody's aware of what's happened. It was a publication that was missed out, so we'll move on with that. So next we go to, uh, items from the public and what I do, just a second, I've got something to read. I, before we go to items from public, "Items from the public is a time for members of the public to discuss or express their concerns to the Board of Commissioners on policies and issues affecting the county government and, and its function. Action will not be taken at this, on this item or any item brought forth from that that has not been properly announced." I just, clarification before we do public comment. At this time, I'll open up public comment. Do we have somebody? Sir, did you have something for public comment? Nope. Anybody else? I see no comments, uh, nobody for public comments. So I, what I do is I'd look for a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
It's moved and seconded, and this is for, uh, the appointment or interview for the Pennington County Highway Superintendent, John. Highway super telephone interviews. There we go. That's what we're going into executive session for. All in favor say aye in the roll call vote.
Buscud?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Aye.
Hagcock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Move to come out of executive session.
Taken.
Executed by Hagcock. Roll called to come out.
Buscud?
Yes. Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Yes.
Hagcock?
Aye.
LaCroy?